Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center at Mooney Boulevard in Visalia. The staff will assist in answering any questions. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearings or when time permits. Roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Filiano?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couldn't get back up.
Just get out of the chair. I was trying to get down on one knee.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use a microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes of the August 24 meeting?
I'll make that motion that we approve, August 24, 2016, minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
The vote, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Absent.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Filiano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved. We have a public hearing. Oh, you know, I went through so fast, I didn't even ask someone if they wanted to speak on a non-agenda item. Thank you very much for your patience. No...
Madam Chair, are you going to 4A?
Yes.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself. I work with the applicants, brother.
Okay. Please note that Mr. Diaz...
Noted.
...is himself.
Oh, there it is.
Don't go to sleep. We have a public hearing, special use permit number PSP 16-013. This is a categorical exemption as special use permit number PSP 16-013 to allow the establishment of a concrete products manufacturing facility on a 10-acre portion of the 20-acre property located in the A1 zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 396, approximately 600 feet east of Road 12, east of State Highway 99 near Kingsburg. And our contact is April Hill. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Filiano and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 3, in County's RMA Planning Branch. The applicant, John Costa, requests for the use permit. The application follows a project review committee project that was discussed by the committee on May the 25th, 2015. No violations on the site. They are just moving from another site near Exeter that had an approved special use permit, planning that date back dated back for a four... There was a 1977 use permit for concrete's manufacturing that dates back to 1906. No violations on that site, but more residents have been built. The applicant bought the business and the property here are near Kingsburg and plans to expand. Manufacturing process...
What did you say, they're closing the Exeter?
Yes, sir. They've actually dismantled that already.
No, it's...
I'm sorry.
It's still a process.
Process. Thank you. Manufacturing process involves concrete being poured into forms inside the production buildings. Raw materials will be delivered by truck and finished products shipped out daily. Rejected product will be stockpiled and crushed. As noted, the subject sites on the south side of Avenue 396, otherwise known as Kern Street, about 600 feet east of Road 12, near State Route 99, the city of Kingsburg and the Fresno County limits. Whoops. I'm going backwards and forwards here. The 20-acre property is located in the A1 agricultural zone, which allows concrete products manufacturing facility with a conditionally approved special use permit. The proposed project is consistent with zoning regulations and development standards. The Fresno County line and Kingsburg city limits run diagonally southwest-northeast, and they're about 150 feet west of the subject site. Surrounding subjects to the north contain a school that's inside Kingsburg city limits that has their playing fields are in the county's zoned A1 and orchards also to the north. Properties to the east contain A1-zoned agriculture, scattered rural residences. To the south is an A1-zoned vacant packing plant by the railroad tracks. And to the west-southwest are Highway 99 and industrial facilities in the M1SR light manufacturing site review combining zone and the M1 zone. The parcel has frontage on county-managed Avenue 396. Public Works requires a drive approach to be constructed at each point of access. As requested by the city of Kingsburg, the applicant is required to complete improvements to the site's frontage. However, the county will determine when that is feasible. If it's not, if it's determined to be not feasible, the county will prepare a long-term deferred improvement agreement to be signed by the property owner. Project is consistent with relevant elements of this general plan with a conditionally approved use permit. It's within the county adopted city-urban development boundary of Kingsburg and is designated mixed use at this time. The 20-acre property contains a grape vineyard and a water well. There was a residence built in 1955 in that cleared space, and that was removed at an unknown date. To the southwest are the other industrial facilities that are similar to this one. There's a cabinet maker, a mini-storage facility, a feed manufacturer, a packing facility that appears to be closed, the tracks on Highway 99. To the north, you can see the school playing fields, and then the school itself is around the corner, the entrance there. Because the property is, has, is shown on California Resource Agencies Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program maps as farmland of statewide importance, it will, and it will convert more than five acres to non-agricultural use. The County Board of Supervisors requires the applicant to establish an agricultural conservation easement. Agricultural will continue on the northern 10 acres of the property or on replacement lands determined to be of statewide significance. The condition of approval requires the applicant to enter into this conservation easement.
April, how big's the existing site?
20 acres.
Five.
Oh, the five acres, the existing business is on a five-acre site.
Oh, where they are now, how many acres is that?
Five acres.
Okay, okay.
So there'll be 10 acres more comfortable. Here's a view of the proposed entrance to the site. From the east on Avenue 396, vineyards, orchards, the school, fence, no sidewalks. M1-zone business on the west end of the site, still in county. The intersection with 396 at Clarkson Drive has a stop sign. So the 10-acre site, the 10-acre facility will be set back about 650 feet from Avenue 396, with the actual manufacturing occurring about 100 feet from the fence post of the school, and that's what this little dotted circle line, half-part circle line indicates. About 75 percent of the concrete products will be agricultural irrigation pipe and box structures, and the remainder will be burial vaults, parking bumpers, K-rail. About 15 employees will work Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the project will be developed in phases with a 3,200-square-foot shop building, 3,200-square-foot office building, truck scale, the smaller 16,000-square-foot and 17,000-foot production buildings to be constructed first. They'll include a wash area for rinsing equipment and cement trucks. The wash area will be equipped with a closed-loop drainage system to an underground sump. Parking areas and a drainage basin will be prepared, and fencing will be installed. In about five years, they'll plan to build a second shop building and a larger production building. Ten years, an additional office, and a second mixer. Environmental Health Services requires a hazardous materials business plan if there are substances stored on the, on the site exceed thresholds. The proposed septic system shall be engineered-designed. Public Works requires a drainage and a grading and drainage plan to be prepared to ensure that storm runoff is collected on the site and not onto the road or other properties. We passed out to you, the, or Velma passed out to you, a letter from Kingsburg that was received on Monday about 2:30, about 3:00 o'clock. We have a memo also on the top that responds to some of their concerns. All of their concerns, we hope. The one, the city engineer requests, asks to review the plans for storm drainage. As I mentioned, there will be a condition of approval for a drainage plan. All storm water will be retained and disposed of on-site, so the storm drainage impact fee has no nexus. City asks for a storm drainage impact fee. A condition of approval was added for the county to share a copy of the county-approved grading and drainage plan with the city engineer. On traffic, the city of Kingsburg is asking for a traffic analysis. The county respectfully disagrees. Omni Means Engineering prepared a technical memorandum to analyze the potential traffic impacts and determine that the project would not significantly impact traffic. The applicant estimated that the project will result in about 12.8 truck average daily trips and 36 employee ADT for a total of 48.8 vehicle ADT. Those are well under the 100 peak hours that would require a detailed traffic analysis as specified in the county general plan. Omni Means concluded that the impacts will be less than significant, and due to the low volume of trips that will result from the proposed project, county will not require preparation of a pavement assessment and rehabilitation plan. In regards to the, oh, the city also asked for a diesel truck health risk screening. A screening was completed by planning staff of the Filarri County Environmental Planning Division, who used to work for the Air District. The mobile source emission health risks are determined to be below the Air District's thresholds of significance and will not result in a significant impact on the nearby school or residential or business reception. City also asked for a noise study. There we are. County staff went and measured noise generated at a similar concrete's product manufacturing facility on August 2nd out in Talarri. Measurements were taken about, have taken about 200 feet from the operating equipment, measured between about 55 decibels and when a big rig truck passed, about 77 decibels. Measurements taken 300 feet to the north range between 47 and 55. The school is about 1,000 feet from the manufacturing area, and distance lessens the noise. The proposed facility will occur inside a structure during normal daytime working hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Mixer equipment and loading dock will be surrounded by large buildings, which will serve to reduce the noise. And in addition, in the 1988 noise element for the county, the technical reference document provides two examples for concrete batch plants and determined that the generalized, generally about 60 decibels over the course of a day. Based on the hours of operation, the distance from receptors, enclosed activities shielding by structures, and noise measurements from a similar operation, the noise generated by the project will result in a less-than-significant effect on nearby receptors, including Back to the noise, the general, general plan policies relevant to noise say that the Health and Safety Policy 8.13 requires a detailed noise impact analysis only when future noise levels have the potential to exceed noise policies and for industrial and manufacturing facilities at 75 dB. Policy HS 8.8 permits new noise generating line uses if the resulting noise do not exceed 60 dB LDN at the boundary of the areas designated and zoned for residential or other noise-sensitive uses. Despite the presence of nearby scattered rural residences, those properties near the project site are zoned for ag, so the 60 dB LDN does not apply to the project. The city of Kingsburg also brought up a issue of having, of having the project proponent contribute a fair share of 18th Avenue and State Route 99 road improvements and pavement rehabilitation plan. They calculated a fair share for traffic impacts based on a nearby church that's going to, a traffic study for a nearby church that's gonna be off Avenue, 18th Avenue and, and Highway 99. Calculated that with 33 trips, which is over our estimate, they'd have to pay a 2.66 percent or $3,990 as a fair share. County finds no nexus for the city's conclusion that a fair share is required. Not, yeah, the Omni Means Traffic Memorandum estimated 23 morning peak trips based on the applicant's information, and that's less than the city's estimated 33 morning trips. And not all of the trips will use the 18th Avenue or State Route 99. For example, the gravel trucks arrive at the site from the east on Avenue 396, and employees use a variety of routes to arrive at the site. The assumption that all the trips are exclusively dedicated to using 18th Avenue or, or Highway 99 is speculative and therefore not sufficient to find a nexus. The city asks for the improvements curb, gutter, and sidewalk at the time of initial project completion and that they not be deferred. The site and properties to the northeast and south are zoned A1 agriculture and contain active operations in the form of vineyards and orchards, where frontage improvements are not required for large parcels. The school north of 396 does not have sidewalks, curb and gutter, or pave out. The property adjacent to the west is zoned M1 and has curb, gutter, and sidewalk and a storm drain. County Public Works will determine if such frontage improvements shall be required, are feasible at this time. If they're determined to be not feasible, the property owner shall be required to sign a county-prepared long-term deferred improvement agreement as a condition of approval. The timeline for the improvements is estimated at two years from project approval. City asks for landscaping along the project frontage to enhance the aesthetic appeal of the proposed use. The county does not require landscaping for properties in ag zones, however, it should be noted that the northern 10 acres will be planted with trees or vineyards, as the property will be under agricultural conservation easement. The city also asked to see a final site plan, which would be the, at the building permit stage, and asks for two points of access. County Fire will be providing fire protection services and did not require a second access point. The special use permit site, site plan shows a, an 18-foot-wide private access driveway to the facility, but the county added, did add two conditions of approval to ensure that the driveway is 20 feet, 20 feet wide rather than 18 feet wide, and that would allow two 9-foot-wide concrete trucks to pass each other. And the second condition would be to secure a secondary access to the facility that is approved by the county fire department. Options would require, options would include, but are, are not limited to developing a looped driveway with two access points on Avenue 396, or an emergency access easement from one of the adjacent properties to the south to allow a secondary emergency access to Clarkson Drive. And there's a photo of the site from the southeast through the mini-storage property and the packing house. Finally, the city of Kingsburg asks to be notified of any scheduled, scheduled public hearings on the proposed project, as well as electronic and hard copies of any environmental assessment or studies. And the county agrees and ensures, ensures that the city will, has been, the request has been met and will continue to be fulfilled. We did send notices and documents to the city's planning director in care of another staff member. We mailed them on, to her attention on August 30th. We have a copy of that letter in your package, new package. Emailed the printed notice to the city, County of Fresno, Kingsburg School Superintendent on August 31st, emailed the link to the Planning Commission's agenda on last Thursday, the 8th of September, and phoned and left postponed messages with the planning director, Kingsburg Planning Director Holly Owen. Told her of the meeting date and the operator needed to comment. No written comments, yeah, comments were received for the initial consultation request back in May of 2016 and on Monday afternoon, as is said from Ms. Owen. There were no written comments received from the Kingsburg City, City Engineer. Regarding species of concern and wetlands, there are no, no species of concern on, on or near the site. It's been used for ag, industrial, and commercial facilities for decades, the, the site and surroundings. Not near any wet, waterways or wetways, wetlands. Regarding cultural resources, the site's not on a bluff or hillside with rocky outcroppings, not likely to contain artifacts. There's standard conditions of approval requiring construction to seize if artifacts or human remains are found. Regarding water, city initially expressed concerns about water, and we did, we do have memorandums from, with an estimate from an engineer to say that the facility's water usage of about 250 gallons per year is less than the 325,000 to 8 million gallons used by the, by the equivalent vineyards. Project is categorically exempt from California Environment Quality Act under the, under Article 19, Section 15061b3, the general rule. The project does not have the potential to result in a significant effect on the environment. It will not significantly impact air, noise, traffic, or water resources. Other resources will also not be impacted. The project will require Seminole Valley Air District, Air Pollution Control District permits, and they'll be transferring their existing permits to this site. The site is not located in an environmentally sensitive area and is surrounded by industrial, commercial, and agricultural uses. Also, conditions of approval are included as part of the special use permit project. A public notice for the project was mailed to owners of properties within 1,000 feet of the subject site, which is more than the usual 300-feet requirement. Notice was also sent to the city of Kingsburg, County of Fresno, and was published in the Visalia Times Delta, Delta, with a 10-day comment, public comment period. This ends staff's report. The applicant, John Costa, is in the audience. If you have any questions, also here with his wife and partner, Catherine.
Yes, go right ahead.
Put the aerial picture up again. How do they get to 99? Do they go across Avenue 396 to Kingsburg?
18th.
18th Avenue, and then into our Road 12, and then there's an on-ramp and off-ramp at the...
They go 18th Avenue.
Pardon?
They go 18th Avenue, they go west here.
Down there, and then there's on, there's a bridge that crosses there?
Yep, overpass.
Where that Foster Farms Commodities or something is?
Right there.
Same off-ramp, and you're gonna go to the Kings River?
The first exit of, of Kingsburg.
Right there by the Bravo Farms thing, right past the Bravo Farms thing, right?
Oh, excellent. Through the, through the chair. For clarification, this is north of the Kings River. This is the south, and, and Mr. Whitlatch is correct. It's, it's Avenue 18, so this is, if you're going into Kingsburg, this would be the first off-ramp going into Kingsburg. There is a facility there, there's, there's various industrial facilities right there at that basic southeast quadrant of, of the intersection of 18 and the 99.
I have to say, I don't have a problem with this project, but, you know, trucks carrying concrete products, they are a heavy user, hard on roads, so I sort of, but if you've ever seen their operation over at Exeter, you don't even know they're there. The only way you know is you see the silos, but, yeah, we were in the irrigation business for years, and we've used them from time to time for specialty products. They're a great company. So am I, I'm not going to assume anything, but that land will be returned back to agriculture, back to citrus, or is it possible?
The top, the northern 10 acres will...
I'm talking about their existing location.
Oh, the existing. Mr. Mr. Costa will be able to talk about that.
So anyway, that's the only thing I see is that there is, you know, I don't, I don't know how we revenue share our roads, but they are a heavy traffic user, but they are a very well-managed company, so, yeah. Thank you.
On your response to Kingsburg on the traffic impact, you based that on the current, but you also mentioned that they have three expansions, or two additional expansions planned. Do you need to include that in the...
They project, Omni Means projected to 2030 at ultimate build-out.
But will that get them over that 100 that you're talking about? Not even that?
Again, just, I briefly summarized the project a little bit to provide some clarity on, on the issues that may be of concern. The Omni Means Traffic Memo projected full build-out, so these numbers are not what's gonna happen immediately. These are full build-out numbers. The city of Kingsburg misapplied the number as far as, they were, they were thinking it was 33 trips at AM peak maximum, and it's only 23, I believe, that's peak AM, which is insignificant, way below the threshold of 100, which is, which is, you know, it's less than a quarter of what the threshold of significance would be. As far as the road improvements, the frontage improvements, the, the reason that the deferral is because there, there's a, there's another project that's proposed that might happen in the near future. We want to make sure that the road alignment is, is lined up before those go, and that's why we, we're not deferring it indefinitely, but it's, it's only to make sure that, that the, the ultimate alignment of that road is, is set before the applicant is required to put in the curb and veteran sidewalk. No landscaping is required, again, because it's gonna be an agricultural buffer. So when you look at this aerial, basically that site plan from the middle up is gonna be maintained in agriculture in perpetuity, and it creates a buffer from this cluster of, of industrial-type projects in that lower half of that project. So that creates a permanent buffer from the, the city of Kingsburg with that ag easement. Then the, as far as the water study goes, again, the water on-site, the wash is gonna be recycled. The, the project itself, determined through a study, was that it's gonna be significantly less use... less use than the current agricultural use of the property. The fire department was requesting a secondary emergency access, and the photo that April had shown, no, go ahead and leave this up though, on the southwest corner, yeah, right there, that, there's a, it's only a matter of a few, maybe a hundred and fifty feet to Clarkson's Road there. There's an emergency access for the mini storage at that same spot. So, what we're requiring is finding a secondary, the easiest path would be able to put a gate in that and have an emergency easement access for the fire to come in from the south end. Alternative to that, if that can't be arranged, a secondary farm road type of drive would be parallel to the western edge of the property going back up to three ninety-six. That'd be a little bit more costly, and it wouldn't be the preferred, but that would be another alternative. Those arrangements have to be finalized before we would issue any building permits.
I know it's Jason, Scott, the engineer, so, it's, am I thinking that there's no well water, it's on a Kingsburg water system, or cow water, or something like that?
There's an existing domestic well.
Existing domestic well, okay.
So, the total ADT is forty-eight point eight, that includes employee traffic, is that correct? That's what it says here?
Yeah.
Is that what you said? Okay.
Supposed to keep this business until Lary County, and they're growing, it's a specialized business.
And as far as, I'm sure the applicant, and I see Matt Graham is in the audience as well, I know there are uses planned for the existing facility that'll be vacating. So, this is not only an ability for the applicant to grow the business, also, there will be business activity on the existing site.
Totally, I was just trying to make the equation that we're offsetting some of the ag use back to agriculture. We're just surrounded by citrus, you don't even, you don't even know they're there. I only know because I used to deal with it.
April, I have a question. The school that's down the road, is that, is there any walking traffic past this site from the school?
On this side of the road, there's only one residence, I'm not sure if there's children.
Pretty far down there, I wouldn't think there'd be walking traffic.
Where's the school?
School is here, access, one access to the playfields, and the other, and the main access is around the corner, eighteenth off here.
I just was wondering, you know, we've been working so hard with safe roads.
There's, if there is, pedestrian is really on the north side of three ninety-six, there's no, other than that one farmhouse, there's nothing that would elicit walking there.
Okay.
The school superintendent did express concerns and did ask for sidewalks, which indicated there are considerations for requiring the frontage improvements.
Right, and they are required, we're putting them in, but as far as the issue with students walking past there, there shouldn't be.
Okay, and then, what type of business is the other manufacturing business that there, it was in the picture? And where is that on the map?
This is Foster Farms Commodities. There's a cabinet maker.
Traffic, do you have any idea the type?
Yeah, we don't have a traffic study from them, they're well-established and inside city limits. This packing shed appears to be closed, as I said. Name on the property is Cacciatore Wine and Olive Oil, now with their main location pixly.
Way out, yeah, they've moved, okay. Thank you.
What's the business that's in the Kingsburg?
That a cabinet company, right?
In the Kingsburg itself, that little jaw?
The main one is the Foster Commodities.
That is Foster Farms. And what's to the south?
South, I think is the, that's the cabinet shop, yes.
And then immediately to the, to the east of that is a mini storage.
Access for that is not from Clarkson, it's from the north.
Thank you for your information.
People are good operators, so, it's a good company. They didn't pay me to say that either.
I'm getting paid for all this.
Okay, if there are no other questions for April Hill and staff, we'll open the public comment period with the applicant, or like to make statement, please?
Family Farm used to?
Good morning, thanks for your consideration, my name's John Costa, I'm with Vanclive Concrete Products, and as you heard this?
And your address, please.
My address here locally, my residence is one six two nine South Jack's Court in Visalia.
Thank you.
Yeah, a little history, that company's been there a long time, nineteen oh six, it's done, it's done a lot of good, it's provided a lot of resource products for ag, for the ag industry, and we'd like to see it continue. We feel that with the product and its concept there, and Kingsburg would serve the industry better as far as its products coming onto ninety-nine quicker, and also going just due north into the east up to Sanger to capture its raw materials. It's actually a good fit, because it seems to have a good flow as far as raw materials into the plant and easy accessibility to Highway ninety-nine. And so, we feel that by abandoning, you know, the site that was there in nineteen oh six, we've actually got pictures of mule drawn, pulling pipe out of that site. It's, it's done a lot of good on that site, but we do feel that it's time to move now to grow a bit. We don't see ourselves growing into like a full-blown, large producer of concrete products. We're very much a niche producer, and niche producers only produce whatever's used locally or in the region, there's no sense, concrete products by nature are heavy to haul, so we don't, you know, you don't wanna haul them further than you have to. So, we're gonna be very regional, specializing more niche products for the ag industry. And also, to answer your question, yeah, the five acres will be returned back to oranges, or it's already zoned back into two residential home sites, the site in Exeter, so. And we feel also that a lot of that equipment's been on-site for, you know, eighty years, so we feel with it, with the ability to go to a new site, that we're actually gonna be more of an environmental-friendly company, because it'll be the latest technology, it'll be there in the batch plant, the batching equipment, so it's got better measures, it's got a, you know, you can recycle the wastewater that's used in the batching operation, it'll reduce our water demand, it'll allow environmental screening, you know, for scrubbing the cement silos, and also the better, just the road conditions, and the better, you know, with right now, we're kind of, it's been there a long time, so the, where we store our products, you know, we, it's always constantly needing water and maintenance, but with this new, with the new storage facility on this site, it'll be all gravelled and sealed, and the drainage will be much better, so there's a lot of upsides to the project, so.
The project overview said you're going to have fifteen employees?
Right.
Is that more than you had in Exeter?
Yeah, right now, we're only running six people. So, we feel, you know, that we, you know, to make application, we wanted to kind of grow percentage-wise and put more people, so we would probably never step over that threshold, we just wanted to go with the idea of that, okay, this is, we'll probably maybe double in the next five to ten years, so, so we're still currently seven, six to seven employees.
Still doing manholes?
Still doing manholes, yeah, yeah, we do. That's one thing that, that our business has slid away from is the manhole stuff, but we're hoping to, you know, make a step back into that industry.
They're closer to ninety-nine, manhole thing is still important in agriculture, you go down to Boswell, have huge drain tile systems, and those require manholes, so, I'm not gonna give you a lecture on drain tiles, but it's an important part of bad ground, making it better, so for agriculture.
Right, yeah, it's just an important aspect, you know, nobody ever sees our work, because it's usually all buried in the ground, or every now and then you see an occasional agricultural stand, but most of the work is there for infrastructure and for development of sites.
Most everything is PVC pipe now, and so, we would use their company for when we had to go to district turnouts, and, like you said, specialty products.
Whatever structures needed for flow of water, yeah.
You say the raw materials came from the north around the Sanger area?
Yeah, the raw material, our source that would be pulled into this site would just be the Vulcan plant that's on Highway one eighty, yeah, that's what we're.
And so, you take that back route through Sanger, then?
Yeah.
Goes on that, it's sort of on the east side of Kingsburg?
Correct, we, yeah, of course, city of Kingsburg doesn't allow traffic through, you know, through town, so we have to come back to the east and then head to the north, yeah.
Actually, that exit takes you straight to Sanger, I think.
Yeah, we have to diver, the trucks have to diver, they're not allowed to go up it, so.
Goes by Parlera that way.
Hey, thank you very much. Your comments. Do we have any other comments at this time? If not, I will close the comment period now. And do we have any other comments from the commission?
I'll make the motion. Is that okay?
That would be wonderful, thank you.
I'm going to motion that we approve a general rule exception consistent with SEQA, both, and the state SEQA guidelines. The general rule pertaining to projects that do not have potential causing a significant effect on the environment, and therefore is not subject to SEQA, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP sixteen dash zero one three.
Second, Dan.
Thank you, could we have the vote, please? Don?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Eleonore?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you, motion approved. Would someone like to go tell Mr. Diaz that he can come back in now? He's probably asleep.
Hey, Matt, that's a beautiful site, so put something nice there.
Okay, director's report?
Shall I wait, or shall we just start?
Oh, you can wait for them to come.
Coffee left, he's out.
He's a little while to wake up.
Oh, he's gonna wake up, gotta wipe the sleep out.
Zeke Thornton's back there.
That's what I was gonna do there.
Yeah, no, I had some county coffee, that kept me awake.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd just like to mention that the Vanderwees project, the applicant withdrew and decided not to go forward, that was, that would have been a meeting here, but the applicant chose not to move forward with the project, so there is no project. We should have posted that in the, because we had a date, certainly should have, so I apologize for that. Back on July twenty-seventh, I believe, Velma's gonna be handing out a letter, Ms. Hunt came in and was concerned about an agricultural well going in on a neighbor's property, and this is a letter of response that we'll be sending out today. Subsequent, I mean, I can, I can kind of walk through this, that she, she'd come on the July twenty-seventh meeting, and she had concerns about the well permit, wanted to know if it was permitted or not, so the RMA investigated, and yes, the Environmental Health Division for the county had issued a permit for a well, an agricultural well on the site. The well setback requirements, she was asking, requiring about that, it's twenty-five feet from the front of the property, and five-foot setbacks from the property edges, and the setback between wells is fifty feet, so, and obviously, the project meant that. The RMA is really not involved with Roberts Farming Operations, or nor should we really ask those decisions as far as why it was located, it's part of his agricultural operation. However, you know, it's just an ag well. The well, the well was issued for agricultural purposes, and she was concerned that it would be, it's part of that he's moving forward with the development ahead of time. Theoretically, it could be considered part of the community water system if the R seven development would be approved, however, it would have to have been constructed for domestic purposes as such, and if it's not, ultimately, if it's approved, if it wasn't built for ag, for domestic purposes, and it's not gonna be used for ag, it'll ultimately have to be abandoned, and it's permitted for ag, and it's part of farming operations to take out orchards from time to time and replant, and put ag wells in, and so, it's all part of that. So, it's, she was concerned about the zoning, why is it allowed? Well, it's, agriculture is allowed in the PD zone, PD FM zone, so, it's completely within its rights, or we have right-to-farm obligations here, so there, it's just a farming, at this point, it's just a farming operation. Subsequent to that, on August ninth, she sent a request to, or complaint to the board of supervisors regarding the same matter, and then talked about generator was being used to power the pump. So, the applicant actually downsized the generator, and the Air Resources Board was called as well, so I could only speculate that it was probably Peggy that called them, and they've investigated, and they said that the, the generator is such a small generator that they don't have any jurisdiction over that whatsoever. But we have been in touch and reached out to the agent of the, of the property, and talked about concerns with that, and how best to address her concerns, so those are really ongoing, actually. I don't know the distance between trying to get electrical service out there or not, but what they're doing on that farming operation is completely compliant with farming, I mean, so, at this point, that's where we're at, but we are continuing to talk to the Dave Roberts and their agent to see if there's any way they can accommodate her on this matter.
I'm a little confused on this, isn't this the property that he came in and was wanting to develop?
Right.
And they were adamantly against it?
Right.
For being front and foremost?
Uh huh.
And now he's farming it? And they're adamantly against that?
Well, they still have a process.
Is the development still in process?
Yeah, they're, they're doing, because it was sent back, they're doing an environmental impact report, and they're going through the studies and all that, so yes, that project is still moving forward.
Oh, it is.
The, the agent is performing and doing that, and will be submitting us at some point in the future, but.
Update, yeah, I know, we did, that's why I was, okay, thank you.
And Chair, I've got a comment, if I may. I'm certainly not a well guy, so I'm not versed in this, but is there an opportunity, well, let me preface this, most of the domestic wells are, at this point in time, are less than two hundred feet deep. The new irrigation wells are going in many hundreds of feet deep, and they're looking for lots of layers of aquifers that they can pull from. Is it feasible to have them have solid casing in those very deep wells down to two hundred feet, so they're not pulling out of these aquifers that the domestic levels are pulling out of?
Yes, it is.
Yes, that is an option. Very, very costly, but it is an option.
It would be costly, and this particular well is a hundred and sixty feet.
Well, wait a minute, why is it, I don't understand why it's costly, you've got casing going down there, it's just a matter of if it's perforated or solid.
Oh, you gotta.
No, it's a different type of.
Seal off the aquifer.
And it's a different type of metal, it's, there's, and I'm sorry, I don't know that, you do, I'm sure, there's two kinds, we're getting ready to do it.
But anyway, you have to, on the outside, seal it with clay.
Yes, yes.
I see, 'cause the water will just, because it's gravel packed anyway.
It just falls the casing down to the.
Yeah, I see now, that makes sense.
Especially if they've got like saltwater or something like that.
Because I lost the well this year, and the minute the walnut guys started pumping, lost it the very day they turned the pumps on.
You know, and that's not a common thing in Lary County.
No, it's not.
This is not a recent thing, it's, you know, we heard testimony, we did queer River Rock about how before the canal came through, and before they ran water down the ditches, that farmers would take turns. I water my orchard, then you water yours, so that there was enough groundwater to go around, and so.
I don't even know that it's all because of the drought, because like you said, it's been going on for years.
It's a desert.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's only so much water. Up to now, you've been able to lower, you know, just lower the pump a little bit, but I'm at the bottom now, if, and I, if the way it's going, I probably have three or four more years on that well and I'm done.
In the old days, you could go deeper, but now you just have to put in a new well, so, which is pricey.
So, that, I, I don't know, be, because, you know, the ag wells are, are pulling a lot of volume and they're going very deep and they have an opportunity to reach that stuff where if your well's only two hundred feet deep, there's no way you're going to get to that deep water. So, I'm just, I was just thinking if they could just preserve that first two hundred feet for the domestic use and then go after, and, you know, they're gonna have to lift up, spend the money and the power to lift that water anyway.
Every farmer in our valley should fight to keep water going down the ditches, because that's the only thing-
That's the only thing that's gonna keep it going.
Keeps things recharged.
But it's not happening.
Out, out of Woodlake, there's that Wachuna Ditch and that all percolates in the ground.
Percolates down, all the way.
Well, I think they ran everything, they ran all the water out, ran it as long as they could.
But I'm just saying, there has been efforts to concrete the ditches-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Which saves, keeps the water from going in, in the ground.
Right, I know Tulare-
But that doesn't save water because the water that goes into the ground is used, so it doesn't, it does not save water to do that.
Well, the problem is you're buying the water up there on the gross and then when, by the time you get it-
That's right, you're paying to-
They're paying again.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, I've been, we're all in business and we're in business and you gotta pay to stay in business, it's only paying is you gotta share that water, keep the economy strong. So, it's like the roads, this Kingsburgs project, I mean, when I develop a piece of land, I don't mind paying to keep that road nice, you know, so.
Well, they need it to be, they need it as much as everyone else does.
Roads aren't free, somebody pays for it.
That operation tears up the roads.
Well, anything with heavy trucking, I think, does. Is that it on your planning?
Uh, well, I was just gonna touch on a couple of things, that's it on, on the Peggy Hunt letter. The budget yesterday at the, at the board was, it was continued, it was pretty much accepted, but it was continued because they wanted to reconsider some salaries of sheriff and some others, so that's gonna be continued till next week, but I, the hearings went through well. Safety element, and we're on schedule for the second meeting in October to bring the safety element to the planning commission for your consideration. We're dealing with, draft is out, review period ends then, or maybe October third, I believe, is when the review period ends for that. We're working with Cow, Cow Fire and, and they have provided some comments and we, we made some adjustments to the draft on, on, so that's moving forward. The, they're complete streets still as we're going, as you mentioned, the concern for, for pathways to schools, safe, safe routes, complete streets program, we're going, continuing our, our expansion of that, we've, we were in, was populated last week and tonight we'll be in Ivanhoe, meeting to discuss their priorities, which sections of road or which areas that are their biggest concerns, so that we're with getting a thirty percent line on their top priority and then we're in a position, a much more competitive position for applying for a grant for that if we've got some design already done to it. So, that, that'll be happening tonight and it'll continue on through, so. That's all that I have of-
I don't have anything else to do.
Projects that we've got going on right now, we awarded our four sixteen road widening project, that's between the county line, so that'll be starting up here in the next few weeks, excited about that one. We've got a park in the early market that is out to bid right now, it's just south of the junior high school and elementary school in downtown, so a pretty nice park feature going to be on. Our road crews are-
Is that the, the current middle park that's there?
No, if you can picture where the, the school fields are between, it's a school, Elm and Jerk Streets, that whole baby dairy area will become a park, so it's a shared use between the school and the community.
Su, uh, south of the elementary school?
Yeah.
Okay, so where the, that little clinic came in?
Yeah, behind that.
That's always been the park.
Yeah.
Trust me.
That was the ballpark back there, huh?
That was the park.
That was the park.
So, it'll be an improved park.
With facilities.
Our road crews are working on the chip seal program right now, we're doing about fifty-two miles of chip seal throughout the county below a million of those worth of works, you can probably see the signs up and that should be going through pretty much the end of September.
They really rejuvenate the roads, I mean, you end up with this nice hard gravel surface, but it, it really does.
There, there's two major improvements that Chip Seal provides, it's a little bit more of an air surface, a little bit more structural, it's in the roadway, but then when we know that because the oil that the rock sticks to is a water barrier, so the water doesn't get into the road and it extends the life.
It's all over your car, too.
Yeah, you, you wind chill at this time of year, so that's pretty much it.
I, I just touched on one other thing, we, yesterday too, the, the board authorized, or actually it'll be Tuesday, we'll be going to the board for six, six two-hundred thousand dollar grants for, from Cow Fire for tree removal. So, where, the tree removal has started up in, up in the forest and we're looking at a, a real tight timeline for these grants, but we're gonna try to go after. So, we have six, I believe six applications, potentially seven, I, I can't recall whether, no, actually it is seven, seven two-hundred thousand, so one point four million is what we're going after with no, there's no match of the county, so if we can grab those, that will significantly help the tree removal project.
That's just for the trees right along the roads, right?
Yeah.
Is the county removing any trees yet?
There's, trees are being removed right now. It's the, the county, actually, Cow Fire is cutting the trees and, and Tulare County Fire is what we're doing, working the roads and keeping the, the traffic and the flow of that, so they're working in conjunction together to do that, but that's, that has started and there's, and they're moving along good with that.
They're doing that along the balspark compared to the roads.
Some of the people- Land have private land that is surrounded by balspark, they're, they're going in and just dropping the trees, I mean, they're so big you can't pull them out. It's a little shame because when you look at them, the timber's perfect, but, you know, it's just the logistics to get them out and they feel if they just drop them, that they'll, they'll rot in place and that, that helps potentially on any potential fire.
Well, unless the fire comes through and then their fuel, you know, it's one-
Like a torch in the air.
Right.
At least it's, at least it's-
On the ground.
Closer to the ground instead of going through the crown.
Remember that last fire they had in Springville, they said the trees were so dry that literally that they'd get so hot they would explode.
Mm-hmm.
It would be like desk-sized pieces going up in the air and then moving on to start it some more and more and more, so.
The trees are still dying too, I can tell you that through.
Well, I, what has happened in, I know in Madera County is they are coming through, cleaning out, and then they say in eight to nine months, they'll come back because they know there's gonna be more dead trees, so they'll come back again and do another. Have we heard anything else about the, an agreement with the Indian Reservation for, they've been trying to work something out that they're going to remove some of their own trees?
I don't know the specifics of that.
Haven't heard anything else about that?
I know that when we were up on the, the reservation, dealing with another project, I know the discussion was that they have their own crew that they, so, I know they have their, their, their operations going on, on site, but, but there was some talk about seeing if their crews could even help others outside the reservation as well.
Another job opportunity type thing, yeah.
Can you more talk about a casino on one ninety?
Uh, I, ultimately, they, ultimately, the tribe would like to locate a new casino, yes.
Sure they would.
Right at the Porterville Airport?
Yeah, I, I think-
Oh, that's on the Indian Reservation, I can't figure that one out, but.
The process for that.
That we won't be involved in.
Okay, good.
Any other?
Well, legal counselor, how are we doing?
Doing well.
No, thank you.
Actually, have you heard that Kathy Mills is retiring? I remember that she's a county consultant, she's retiring probably in March, actually.
She's gonna have to come in here and see us then before she leaves.
Yes.
Say goodbye, that's right. Thank you, okay. Meeting adjourned.